And in saying so, I do want to draw your attention to items number 21 where the recommendation is that of the operational leadership team and that that item be referred to staff for review as well item number 21, item number 22. I think both of those items are recommended to go back to staff for review. So if we're going for item 21 and 22. And also item number 17, sorry, item number 17 is also that that be referred to staff for review and a report. Okay, so those are the recommendations on the consent items. I have councillor vague.
Yes, I'd like to pull item number 6. I just have a couple of quick questions on that and that's the administrative monetary penalty system for automated speed enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Regional councillor?
Thanks, yeah. Item 3, which is the allocation policy.
Mm-hmm.
Item 4, which is the heightened density bonusing. And I assume, well, I assume we still have to pull number 9 even though it's going to be held down.
It will be dealt with separately, that's correct.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Councillor Bezance?
Item number 2. Just have a few questions about that.
Okay, and are there any others? Okay. Then could I have a motion, please, to adopt items number 7, 8, and 10 through to 33 by consent? Councillor Kerwin, thank you. Seconder? Councillor Bezance. All those in favor? So not only are we back from school, but we're also learning a new system, so I would ask everyone's patience as we go through the process of doing so. Having established our agenda, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Being none then, we have no presentations or recognitions, but we do have a deputation. This deputation is Ms Patricia Hildreth, and that's with respect to item 9 in our agenda. Ms Hildreth, if you could come forward, please. We permit up to five minutes, and I think you'll see there's a timer there that'll let you know how things are going.
Mayor Van Beinen, council members, town of Newmarket staff. I have been a resident of Newmarket and have lived at 763 Gorm Street, across the street from the property at 770 Gorm Street for 45 years. I have questions and concerns regarding the upcoming OMB appeal meeting. I have contacted Ted Horton and the OMB to voice my concerns, but have not received satisfactory information or answers. The original committee of adjustment meeting was held on Wednesday, March 15, 2017. Sean Tuzzi, Memar Architects Incorporated, represented the applicant and the appellant, Richard Lee and Holly Wilkes Lee, but actually was a spokesperson for the persons who were purchasing the property. The town of Newmarket Planning Department recommended that the consent application and the variance applications did not meet the four tests required by the Planning Act. The committee of adjustments stated, "The applications be," and I quote, "denied on the basis that it did not meet the intent of the official plan to sustain and enhance the character of the existing property and that the severance would result in development that is not desirable or appropriate on the property." My questions and concerns regarding the property are as follows. Number one, the previous owners of the property were the applicant and appellant for the request to change the requirements of the town of Newmarket bylaws. They are no longer the owners and do not reside at 770 Gorm Street. How can the OMB appeal proceed under this circumstance? Number two, why is the town of Newmarket not responsible to fight for the residents and to uphold the town's decision to deny these applications? Number three, why would the town of Newmarket not have representation at the appeal to justify their initial stance of rejection to the applications? In the light of the information concerning this property, it is absolutely imperative that representation from different levels of the town of Newmarket attend the OMB appeal on Thursday, September 7, 2017 to protect the interests of the residents on the firm comments made for denying the applications presented at the March 15, 2017 Committee of Adjustment by Ted Horton Planner, Town of Newmarket, Ward 2 councillor David Kerwin, and Athol Hart, Chair of Heritage Newmarket. Number four, shouldn't any proposed changes be presented to the town of Newmarket as a new application or an amendment to the original request for consent and variance changes to the bylaws? Any changes to the original application should not be allowed or accepted at the OMB hearing. The residents of Ward 2 would expect answers to these questions due to community concerns before the scheduled OMB meeting, which is taking place September 7. Just as a short addition to the information that I've given you and the questions, the new owners do not yet reside at the property. Already, there has been two bylaw infractions. What makes the town feel they, the new owners, would be in compliance with any OMB ruling if they're not in compliance with the town's bylaws at the present time? I feel the town of Newmarket has a major responsibility to the residents to attend this meeting and uphold the decisions that they made to deny the applications at this appeal to the OMB. This appeal, if allowed to proceed, affects the fabric of our wonderful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of clarification? Councillor Kerwin, question?
Thank you, Mayor Van Beinen. I shall be brief because we will be going into an in-camera session, hopefully on the two-third majority of council. And I would hope by the end of the day, all your questions, Pat, will be answered. And I thank you and Gord and other residents from Ward 2 for attending. I, like you, feel that, and I attended that committee of adjustment on that day, and I felt that the decision was the right one at that time. But all your questions, I hope, will be answered by the end of the day, and thank you for asking the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regional councillor?
Yeah, I was wondering, Mr Mayor, if a member of staff could respond to the questions that we're able to respond to now. I believe question 1 and 4 are entirely of the purview of the OMB. Well, they're valid questions, and I wonder, and in fact, you know, communities have lobbied recently to address, at least address issue 4. But they are clearly, there's nothing we can do about it. The OMB, number one, I believe you were asking about can the new owners continue an OMB appeal that someone else started? And number four was, if there's changes made during the OMB process, shouldn't it have to come back here and go through the proper planning process again? The town takes position on number four, as does the region, and just about everybody else, that yes, you're correct. But it's the OMB's purview and not ours. But maybe if a staff member could comment more fully or tell me where I'm right or wrong.
Esther?
Thank you very much. To you, Mr Mayor, and to the regional councillor. So those are both, all of those questions are very good. Typically, we will see an application by someone who is authorized on behalf of the landowner, and that's not unusual. If there is a change in ownership, obviously the OMB needs to be convinced or assured that there is authority for that person to proceed on the same application that was before the committee of adjustment. We have seen situations in connection with a potential change to the application that is absolutely within the jurisdiction of the board to determine whether the change is substantial enough that it ought to go back to the municipality, and it is the board's decision whether the application could proceed, even though slightly modified, without going back.
And so it's fair to say that on the first one about who can represent or who can appeal for whom are new owner, old owner, that's the decision of the OMB, as is the fourth question, which is, you know, to what degree changes are made and if it can be heard or not heard. It's the OMB's decision as well.
Esther, go ahead.
Yes, that is correct. We do have the Director of Legal Services here if she'd like to add anything to that. But typically, the board would require assurance that there is legal authority for the person or party who is there before the board, and so that is generally determined as part of the proceeding.
Okay, thank you. It would be appropriate then to receive the deputation, refer that to item 9 of the agenda, and it will come back after we've had the closed session report.
I'll move out, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Kerwin, thank you. As a seconder, regional councillor. All those in favor? And that is carried. Next item are the consent items. Are there any items that members of council wish to deal with separately? And in saying so, I do want to draw your attention to items number 21, where the recommendation is that of the operational leadership team and that that item be referred to staff for review. As well, item number 21, item number 22, I think both of those items are recommended to go back to staff for review. So if we're going for, item 21 and 22. Yeah, those. I thought there was. And also item number 17, sorry, item number 17 is also that that be referred to staff for review and a report. Okay, so those are the recommendations on the consent items. I have councillor vague. Items?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number 6. I just have a couple of quick questions on that, and that's the administrative monetary penalty system for automated speed enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Regional councillor?
Thanks, yeah. Item 3, which is the allocation policy.
Mm-hmm.
Item 4, which is heightened density bonusing. And I assume, well, I assume we still have to pull number 9 even though it's going to be held down.
It will be dealt with separately, that's correct.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Councillor Bezance?
Item number 2. Just have a few questions about that.
Okay, and are there any others? Okay. Then could I have a motion, please, to adopt items number 7, 8, and 10 through to 33 by consent? Councillor Kerwin, thank you. Seconder? Councillor Bezance. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Let's start with item number 2 then. Item number 2 is the zoning bylaw and the bylaw review. We do have recommendations that we go forward with the review. Could I have motions with respect to the recommendations? I have councillor 20 and then councillor Bezance. Are you moving the recommendations, councillor 20?
Procedure-wise, usually the person that pulls it moves it, but I don't mind moving it.
Okay. Do you want to move that? Do you want to move the recommendations?
Yeah, I'll move the recommendations.
Okay, and then you'll second? Okay, all right. That's good. Speaking to it as the mover then, councillor Bezance.
Yeah, I appreciate this report from staff and the recommendation that we do a comprehensive zoning bylaw review. And I guess one of the questions that I have with respect to this is around the timing of the review and sort of a sense of greater urgency, given that with the introduction of Bill 139, the Building Better Communities and Conserving Watersheds Act, which would essentially eliminate the OMB in favor of establishing local planning appeals, tribunals. It seems to me that making sure that we have our own sort of house in order with respect to our zoning bylaws, making sure that there's conformity with provincial planning policies, but also any other legislation, would be paramount so that when that act is passed, assuming that it will be approved, that we'll be in good stead to avoid any confusion or issues that will then move forward to the local planning appeal tribunal. We're not quite sure when that will and what sort of form that will take place, but certainly I think that it gives us an opportunity now to put some more priority and urgency in having this review done. So my question really was with respect to anticipated timing for the review and organization of the public consultation process, that would be part of that. The other question I have is with respect to the degree to which the review will take into consideration that there have been a number of changes to, for example, lot sizes are a lot smaller now than they would have been seven years ago with bylaw 2010 or bylaw 2006. And things like, we have situations where more residents are putting up those removable gazebos, for example, in their backyards. But my understanding is that under the current zoning bylaws, there's a certain setback that would prohibit, into next spring for the balance of the work. And in respect of the, the item you mentioned around what I'm referencing as clarity changes, so we have seen an awful lot of new things that are, weren't on our radar some years ago. I think the report talks about things like microbreweries and so on, as well as the matters strictly relating to built forms. So that's entirely appropriate, and that we will be looking at those things. And we'll be also receiving your input as we bring forward the individual reports. So if there's some item that we might have missed, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Just as a follow-up question.
My, okay. It's a follow-up question. As part of the consultation process, then, will there be an opportunity for residents or council to identify sort of new issues that, that wouldn't necessarily be contemplated in your 140 items, but if something came to, to the fold that we could introduce that as, as a change for consideration?
Mr. Nethery, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's, that's up to me. We have it at 140. If we were to wait another three months, we'd probably be up to 150. So, so we expect to hear that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Twinni.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this, all of this information. It's certainly an extensive list of items. And my question is with regards to, was it regard to timeframe? So you did answer that, but perhaps more, how are we going to be advertising or reaching out to the public to let them know about this? And how is it going to be, I guess, marketed or portrayed through, I guess, you know, we'll do it through our newspapers, et cetera, but just so that people understand what it's all about, because it is quite complex, and, you know, these things get written in verbiage that sometimes is not easily understood by the public, and I think it's an important exercise for the, for the residents to come out and participate in, especially with regards to some of the items on here, with regards to some of the infill projects and, and the zoning bylaws and regards to that, because that's going to be important to a lot of residents as well.
Mr. Nethery.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's, that's a good point, and because these aren't specific to any particular property, it won't be sort of your typical notice to everyone who owns property within 400 feet. So we will have to do a broader kind of circulation. We will certainly be making use of all the media available to us, including the print media, but also we can take advantage of social media. And your point's well taken, so I think we'd be more than happy to talk to communications to get some advice in terms of how we might be able to do some reach. And I guess I should also reiterate that we'll probably be doing this in phases, so that the technical ones will be dealt with at one stage, and then those that are sort of legislative might be at a different stage and so on. So we might be, in fact, sort of talking to different audiences at different points.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a good point. And therefore, would it be that we would, any changes made to it? Would we be doing it as a whole, or would we do it as well in pieces as we go along?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's safe to say that if we end up with some, some buy-in on a series of technical amendments, we can bring that forward and get that done and out of the way so that we can begin utilizing that.
Okay.
And then similarly with the next phase.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Regional counselor?
Thanks very much. Also the timing, the, we're also, we're waiting a report that Counselor Twinni requested that relates to a former work we did in the downtown in the War II regarding lot sizes, setbacks, severances, et cetera. Will that be coming before this? And I'm just looking at how will, how does it interact? Does it need to come before this, or how does it interact with this? Because I know there's, it does refer to yard, exterior yard setbacks, maximum lot coverage, et cetera. Or is it, is it a separate process, and it doesn't matter if it comes first or second?
Mr. Nethery, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is, we do have that one separately on our radar as well, and we expect to be able to report this fall on, on Counselor Twinni's motion. And they're kind of tied, but I think we can certainly deal with it distinctly on its own.
And that, that would assume likely occur before this?
In all likelihood, through you, Mr. Mayor, although they could be coming fairly close.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Timelines, can you, as a reminder?
We're hoping to, with your direction, we're hoping to move right away. We've already got a lot of the background work done, so we can finalize that, and I expect that we might be able to be in a position to be holding at least the first of the three statutory meetings, perhaps as early as this fall.
Great, thank you. No further questions, then. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? None, and that is carried. Thank you. Next item then is item number three, the servicing allocation. We do have recommendations. Could I have a motion with respect to the report? Regional counselor, seconded by? Somebody needs Counselor Bazanz. Regional counselor as the mover.
Thank you very much. Nope, sorry. Thank you, thank you very much. The, the question I have on this, I think, I did ask that we looked at this a little bit more in terms of whether there was a way that we could prioritize even within the secondary plan area, and, you know, largely, the 1A is, and this is, is addressing that in a point system, and I think this is a really helpful direction. As was discussed earlier, we, we could and will likely be in a constrained environment for five, 10 years in regards to allocation, and we may need to sometimes in some years pick and choose, and to have a clear criteria that's transparent for everybody, but also reflects some of the goals of the town is, is very helpful. The one question I had, and I apologize for not having raised this previously, but often the case, you read something a second or third time, and you see something new. What I was wondering was, is we have a metric that applications that participate in the region's Sustainable Development through LEED Servicing Efficiency Incentive Program, three points for that. Does that capture, or did we consider having a metric that, that related to LID, or Low Impact Development Measures? This becoming, you know, more and more important that we, that we have the, the LID features at the forefront, and, you know, we only have to watch the news the last few days to see that the, the weather changing and the storm patterns and what's occurring in Houston. And so I was just wondering if we, you know, if, if that's, if LEED covers enough of that, that that sort of incorporates that, or did we consider possibly even having that as a separate category to try to continue to? And I know we have some requirements provisions as well in that area, but I'm just wondering how that, that all fits together.
Mr. Nethery.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the policy itself doesn't specifically address or particularly contemplate the LID, as I understand it, and the town engineer can help me on this perhaps, but it's my understanding that that's almost the, the bottom line minimum requirement nowadays for, for new development. So that said, the LEED program, which, as you know, would kick in for, I guess, the three or four stories above and up, that one is, at this point, within this document, optional, and it no doubt would take into account some of those principles, I would expect. But we don't have anything specifically in there, so we could give some consideration to that if that was the direction.
Okay. The, I guess, I mean, I don't know enough to know, so I don't want to make a recommendation unless somebody can comment on it, whether it's covered enough, or whether we feel we've got adequate other provisions to, to move that forward, or whether this could be another opportunity to put LID at the forefront. So I, I wouldn't mind getting a little guidance on that, because the other option, and maybe I'm wrong, but maybe it could be just incorporated really easily in one sentence in that category, LEED and, and/or LID.
Mr. Mayor, we may be able to make that determination before this reaches council, and if it is appropriate, we could stick something in there.
Okay. All right, so that's more of a direction to staff?
Yeah, but if somebody can get either back to us with a little memo or, or comment now, but just giving us an idea about, is this something that's, like, helping understand, is this something that we've already got adequate provisions on, or whether, you know, that, those issues, I think, would be helpful to understand.
We can certainly do that, Mr. Mayor, and as I would indicate, those are sort of the normal requirements that we kind of canvass anyway as we're dealing with an application separate from the question of whether or not it's an allocation matter. But we'd be happy to look at that, and we can provide you that information in advance of council.
Well, if it does make sense, I think it would be worth considering. I think if nothing else, it's, again, it's another chance to put LID at, at the forefront of a document where people reading it go, okay, we, the town is serious about this. But, thank you.
All right, thank you. As the second or Counselor Bazanz, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Just a question with respect to the, the rescinding portion of the policy. Can you remind me, is this sort of in, in place currently, or is it something that we're proposing as, as the, as part of the new eligibility and policy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, that is a requirement that says part of our current policy and has been for a few years now. So theoretically, when we bring that annual report up where we're examining whether or not allocation should be continued, the principle is that they're all deemed to be rescinded, and what we are asking and recommending to you is to reinstate those ones that are still moving forward. So that's the principle there.
So it's quite conceivable that in asking for a renewal of the allocation, that, that an applicant may actually up their points if they've, they've also achieved some of the other criteria since the previous year?
That certainly would be possible, although the, the fine-grain prioritization that the deputy mayor was referencing really kicks in for those applications that are part of the urban centers, so along Davis and along Young. So something that's perhaps a greenfield, you know, out in the northwest quadrant or something, wouldn't be subject to those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? I think none, then I'll call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? None, and that is carried. Thank you. Height and density. Item number four, guidelines. Report is before you. There are some recommendations to adopt the density bonusing implementation guidelines that are attached to the report. Could I have a motion with respect to those recommendations? Regional counselor, second or? Counselor Vig. All right, regional counselor as the mover.
Thanks very much. Yeah, this, again, I think is another report like the last one that's moving us forward in some very constructive manners. I did have some questions that have just helped me understand it more. If I'm reading it correctly, the first paragraph in the background refers to the Section 37 Planning Act itself, and that height and density, there can be a law increasing height and density of a development in exchange for the provision of facility services or matters. So for the provision of those things. And then it says at the top of, then, under the comments section, the next section, it starts saying, "Section 37 monies are typically used by municipalities." In other places, it refers to, in page 21, item three, that staff will prepare the preliminary report, which will outline the details of the proposed Section 37 public benefit for committee's consideration. And then number five on page 22 says, "The associated calculations equal to 25 percent." And I guess what I'm getting at is it's kind of, and maybe it's on purpose, and I suspect it is, but it seems to go back and forth between the idea of money or provisions of services. And what I'm assuming is that the way the system works is that we do a calculation that sends the benchmark, and if the provision of an actual provision as opposed to money exceeds that, you're fine, or you can provide the amount of money that's calculated. First, I guess, just to ask my correct, that assumption?
Mr. Nethery.
Mr. Mayor, that, that is correct, and I guess the principle is a little bit like the manner in which we deal with, say, cash in lieu of parkland. So in, in most cases, or many cases at least, the expectation would be that we would receive the actual parkland itself, but there might be circumstances where it's appropriate to actually get the value of that land instead, so that you could use it somewhere else. So the, the principle here, and I'm not sure if it's really giving primacy one way or the other, but that, that where it's appropriate, a developer is in a position to actually provide that benefit, whether or not it's public art or some other feature. But where that's not perhaps practical, it's, it's also conceivable that council could receive an amount that then gets put in, placed into a reserve and can be drawn upon for, for what council deems as an appropriate benefit.
Okay. So given that, I guess what I'm thinking is that we had bonusing provisions previously, not Section 37 per se, but in the secondary plan, and we saw it realized in 212 Davis. In 212 Davis, it was the provision of rental accommodation. How would one go about calculating whether the provision of rental accommodation met a dollar value?
Well, that's a good question. I, I think, you know, it, it probably relates better to more physical elements that you might be expecting to see, be it a streetscape improvement or something like that. There might very well be some way to monetize what the benefit of a rental housing, or for that matter, an affordable housing project might be. I'm not quite sure how you would do that, but I think we would have to look at that and, and try to determine. The expectation is that there would be conversations between the developer and council, ultimately through us, that would help refine that.
So I wonder if, if, if there should be some language that reflects that? I guess I'm a little worried that the, the language bias leads one towards certain types of benefits, i.e., the less social benefits, the more hard benefits, as opposed to this, what is sometimes referred as to soft services, or? So, and the other question I'm having, a few of them, but is that, is there, it refers on page 33 to the final, you know, increase in land value. The percentage of increase in land value at 25 percent equals upset limit of Section 37 contribution. Upset. How does that, how is that? Am I correct in hearing that that means upset, the term upset sounds like the maximum limit? So are we not in some ways using language that caps the value? I mean, I'm sure it doesn't legally cap it, but again, it, shouldn't that be the minimum contribution?
Well, I, I think what we're talking about is, is the 25 as a minimum.
Right.
And, you know, where you go beyond that is probably subject to whatever degree of negotiation. I don't know that we would necessarily have the authority. If, once this is a council-adopted guideline, which establishes that number, arguably, you don't have the authority to go beyond that. However, if, you know, through negotiation, it's a, it's a transaction, so it's conceivable that someone could give you more.
Right. So should that language be a minimum? Section 37 equals the Section 37 minimum contribution as opposed to an upset limit? Because isn't it that, we're not going to accept less, I assume?
I think that might be fair. Let us have a look at that, and we can, we can bounce it around a bit. I, I think that might be fair.
And where I'm going with that is really my final question, which is, when I saw some of the theoretic calculations on how this might play out, I have to say that, that overall numbers didn't wow me, if I can be that blunt, in terms of the, the, the return for what a developer gets from bonusing in terms of what are the value that that creates. And the, so I guess what I'm asking is, you know, the way we did it before was to have, you know, just the idea that, you know, appropriate benefit in it. Do we have to define it as, as, as much as we do? It is the definition, and by defining it as much as we are, are we, are we perhaps selling ourselves short on what potentially could be realized?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we, what we discussed in the report is that we're also looking at what the common practice throughout the province is beginning to move toward. So that's where you're seeing that range of between 25 to 35 percent. And so arguably, if you were to go to the 35 percent, you would be in a better position. That said, we, we are also making reference to the fact that as part of the marketing in the corridors initiative, we're, we're trying to keep those costs to a, to a reasonable level so that we're not discouraging development coming forward. So it's, it's, it's really our, you know, council's call as to which way they would prefer to go. Our advice to you is to try to go for the lower number for the time being, and we can always revisit it in the future.
Yeah, and it wasn't so much saying that, I guess, I guess what you're, what you're saying, though, is everybody's kind of moving to a very defined, okay? Because part of me was wondering if defining it is actually going to lead a conversation to a lower denominator, but you're saying that's pretty much becoming the standard.
It seems to be, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Because I can't help recall, but in, I think it was Richmond Hill, probably six years ago, they had a section, I'm pretty sure it was Section 37 bonusing that they used. If it was, it was, anyway, they... If it was, anyway, they, they basically received three condominium units into housing York's, housing stock. That's, that's a pretty big value, which would probably far exceed what a calculation would lead to. And that's when my mind started going, well, then if you calculate it, would the person go, hang on, why, why am I donating three? That's crazy. But you, you think that, that, that approach is either the norm or expected or...
Well, indefensible, through you, Mr. Mayor, that, now I'm not sure to what extent someone could challenge it, but we want to, we want to remain fair. And, you know, after allocation, for example, is more widely available. And we, and if we are successful in our marketing the corridors efforts, then I can see some of those things going away.
I wonder if it might be worthwhile to add a recommendation that we review this, say, in two years, once we see what the effect is on our marketing the corridor strategy. If we're accomplishing what we want to accomplish, might be a good time for us to review that and maybe end that, this be reviewed in two years.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. I guess the last question I would have, then, would, would it be, did you ever, I guess, in reviewing other jurisdictions, did you ever see an example where they, instead of saying 25% or 35%, they said 25 to 35%? And it provides for that, a larger range with a higher end number that at least is in the conversation, but there, but technically, they would only be held to the 25?
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at the author of the report.
Adrian? Come on up to the desk.
...this specific, specific percentage, sorry, Mr. Mayor, that is used to calculate the amount. Otherwise, it's sort of, you don't get the crystal clear, answers the developers usually look for. You want to creep out forward, you know, if, if this or that, or that, it's just, you know, the numbers on the outset, it's a little bit, you get going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next time, we'll have you come up to the mic, Adrian.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, just for the benefit of the, the audience, then what was said off mic was that it is typically not a range, it's typically one or the other that is selected. So, and, and it speaks to the industry's desire for certainty in terms of how they, how they're operating.
Okay, so yeah, I think if we could add the recommendation about revisiting in two, review these two years to see what some of the examples start to look like, I would like to see us change the language from upset to minimum. And, and if possible, staff could look for an opportunity in the report to speak to opportunities to do, to work with the community to, to find greater value than, than what is required. Some, some language that encourages a, I just feel like the, the language leads to, and that's your number. Whereas, you know, I think in the past, at least, there was potential for, for something more than that, and that they would at least, if there's a possibility of inserting language that reflects that kind of thinking, that these, this is a minimum, and that, you know, that, that, you know, town and Newmarket staff and council, you know, work with developers to look at, you know, opportunities for greater benefits to both the community they're creating and the existing communities, or something, you know, you know, get what I'm saying? Something that leads that conversation to something that it's, it's not gray, it's not, nothing's required, it's just, it's a minimum, and...
Although to some extent, I think it moves away from the certainty that the industry is looking for. So it's...
I think the 25% is still clear, that's the certain part, but it's a minimum, and it's, because I think you'll see examples out there. I suspect if you're going to look like Richmond Hill, you'll see examples where the minimums are exceeded, probably not that infrequently. And so it's, it's nice to have that door open as opposed to close. Anyway, leave it there.
Yeah, they do have market demand and allocation as well, whereas we don't have the market demand right now, and we're trying to promote that. But I do have other members in, in the queue. Okay, councillor Quappes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, I'm more of a numbers guy, so when I ask staff to give me specific examples, to run few numbers for, for these formulas, I have to be honest, I was a little underwhelmed when I saw the bottom line. I think right now, we're getting many things more in return than what these numbers are giving us. But I do understand the need for clarity, and I understand the need to be very specific with what might be a give and take when we, when we provide a little bit of flexibility. And I do think that reviewing it in two years is a very good idea in order to see if this is working for both sides. If I can suggest one other thing, on page 20, there's a list of areas where the public would be benefiting from. If I can suggest that we not limit ourselves to these, because in the example that the regional council has given us with the 212 Davis, there could be a lot of gray area where we can get some benefits. So I would ask to take that into consideration, to, to be a little bit open.
I think the phrase at one time was, "For example, but not limited to."
Exactly.
That would be fair, Mr. Mayor, that these are, these are actually stemming directly from the secondary plan. So that's the policy framework that gives us guidance. But certainly, it, it's not necessarily meant to be an exhaustive list, it's kind of such things as kind of list.
Okay. Great. Councillor Vig, I need to ask you if you're okay with the amendment for the two-year review as the secondor, is that, you see that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I do see that as a friendly amendment. If I can also just ask a procedural question. Typically, when we had a mover and a secondor, the secondor was the second to speak. Not that I, what I have to say is so pressing...
That was an oversight, that's an oversight on my part, my apologies.
Certainly councillor Quappes and councillor Kirwin, go ahead. I just want to know whether I should be pushing the button if I'm a secondor or not, whatever works.
We should have you as the secondor. So that was an oversight. So we'll, I'll have councillor Kirwin speak, and then we'll come back to you, okay? Councillor Kirwin?
Just, just some direct questions. And it affects both the servicing allocation and the, the height and density. And I'd like to go through our commissioner, Mr. Nohammer. To affect all of this, where are we at the, the twinning process of the pipe or the Forest Main that will give us the extra allocation or the extra sewage capacity, Peter? Or on the reclamation plant was supposedly to be built in East Gwillylumbury? I mean, we can be hypothetical, but if, if those projects are not in place, it, it leaves us lacking servicing allocation, in my mind. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, those are the first of my questions. So I informed my residents on Pearson that we were going to start this year, but it was delayed. So we're now delayed at least a year. So where are we with the Forest Main? And secondly, to me, the reclamation plant, that's what they call it, makes more sense than the twinning. It allows us more capacity. So go ahead, I'm interested.
Mr. Nohammer, perhaps maybe the, the good news is, is that the Minister of the Environment is now our local MP, MVP.
I'm well aware of that.
And I'm hoping that that, that works to the benefits that we're seeking. Go ahead, Peter.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that's a very good question, councillor Kirwin. You're quite correct, the twinning and the water reclamation plant as part of the overall solution called the Upper York Sewage Solution has been delayed. There have been some delays with respect to the regions receiving the Minister of the Environment and Climate Chain's approval of the individual environmental assessment. There are efforts underway to try to secure that approval from a staff level and, and political level. So I think there's, as the mayor mentioned, the current minister is, is being asked to look at this. But in terms of timeline, we don't have a definitive answer yet, only that you're quite correct, the project, the twinning of the Forest Main was to start this year. That has been delayed, we've been told. We're hopeful that it will start next year, and that the delays can be minimized to the period that was lost. But as we learn more from the region and our counterparts at the region, you know, both the region and your staff will keep members of council informed as to the status of that project.
Great. You know, if I, if I have an opinion, I'm not in favor of the, of the twinning. It's not a long-term solution, it's a stopgap measure with the growth that's going to occur in the region of York. And I was in favor of the reclamation plant, that's what they call it, that was to be located in East Gwillylumbury, which would give us double or triple, eventually, the capacity of the, of the, of the twinning of the pipe, which is called the, the Upper York Sewage Solution.
I wonder if I might have the CAO speak to that, councillor Kirwin?
I know, but I, I just want to finish. So we're delayed, at least one year, maybe two year, because there's an election coming up in 2018, and, and controversial decisions aren't made in a, in an election year, at least as far as my knowledge is concerned. The allocation that we have now, stand pat, status quo, what population, I direct that to the director of planning, status quo, what does that allow us to grow to? If we used up all that service allocation, where would we be? And I, I'll tell you why I'm concerned. If it constantly is delayed, we could be in the midst of massive subdivisions, such as Glenway, and there's no more service allocation. So then what do we do with the, with the turned up soil? So where are we at the maximum capacity, Rick, that we have as sewage, as servicing?
Mr. Netheri.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's not a great deal.
Oh, it isn't.
It's a relatively small amount. You can take some solace in knowing, however, that allocation is necessary before draft approval can be given on any given plan. And so that's the, the matter that triggers the physical development out there. So you wouldn't be, you wouldn't expect to see that sort of a scenario where, where something is, is allowed to go foul because they've already done the work.
Okay. So, so we would have enough servicing allocation to finish off the, the part of Glenway that would be approved, the 700 and so houses?
The, the Mary Anville development actually is a bit unique in as much as it's operating on a joint agreement with the region of York and the town that deals with an inflow and infiltration improvement program, where they're actually doing physical works in, within the municipality to, in effect, create servicing allocation for themselves. So they're, they're patching up leaky pipes, they're, they're removing downspouts that are going into the sanitary system. So those mechanisms are what they're relying on in terms of providing the allocation. So we're sort of loaning them the allocation that we have initially, but then we'll be getting it back. So they're a bit unique in that sense, and we're quite confident that, that they'll be able to do the, the program as, as anticipated.
So, so basically, what you're saying in sum is that we have limited servicing allocation remaining. If, if an area such as Forest, Forest Green came in on the cemetery lands, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, more or less, but there's limited less, there's limited servicing allocation left without either twinning the pipe or the reclamation plant.
Indeed. And, but, Mr. Mayor, through you, what I'll do is I can reissue the report that we had not terribly long ago on the annual allocation question, and I can make that available to all members of council, just to remind you of the number.
That would be fantastic, and that's the, the part of the answer I'm seeking. And now if Mr. Sheldon can inform me of what's happening with the, what we call the reclamation plant, or the water treatment plant, or the, the twinning, I would appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to clarify that in terms of the schedule that we're beyond right now, the twinning of the Forest Main was to be functional by 2019, with the reclamation facility complete by 2024. Now that is going to be delayed. But the Forest Main twinning is an operational issue. It does provide a little bit of additional capacity, but it is required for redundancy in case there is a break in that single Forest Main, then we have a very significant environmental issue to deal with. So the twinning of the Forest Main has been on the agenda for some time, and we're pushing to try to get that moving as quickly as possible. And on the matter of allocation, we know that growth in Newmarket, the successful growth in the future is dependent on allocation. So there's a very careful management of the allocation that we have left, including the II programs, as the director has indicated, but also just simply through items such as the prioritization of growth through the allocation policy. And the annual review that we do to determine, you know, use it or redistribute it policies. So that is being carefully looked at, but we do need to have additional allocation come to us in the future. So there's still a lot of effort being made at the political and the administrative and the technical area to keep things moving.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Vig.
Thank you very much. I just have one quick question, and then one comment. And a number of years ago, I had the opportunity to, to actually do some research on the Section 37. In particular, I was looking at what Toronto was doing. And if I recall, including my conversations with staff at City of Toronto, that they, for the Section 37 bonusing, they gave a great deal more weight to named benefits as opposed to benefits perhaps suggested by a developer, or some, or something like that. And the main reason they did that is that they didn't want to open a whole can of worms to people saying, hey, if I give you this, or that, et cetera. So my question is that for the named benefits, and we do have a fairly comprehensive list here, and it's not that off the top of my head I can think of something I would like to add to that, are we doing the, the same thing, or is that part of legislation, or just part of Toronto's practice? Or, or how is that going to operate here? Just the type of weight we give named benefits as opposed to unnamed benefits?
Mr. Netheri.
Mr. Mayor, the, I, I think in answer to your question, it probably is their practice and how they operate there. That said, I mean, there, there no doubt is a policy framework, no doubt within their official plan, that sketches out the kinds of broad range of, of elements that, that are of importance to the city of Toronto. So you have done that already through the, the adoption of the secondary plan. But as we mentioned earlier, it's, you know, it can be sort of treated as such items as. So we'd be very interested in hearing what a developer has proposed, but that doesn't mean that you're necessarily going to take it. It has to be something that has value to the municipality. So, so that's why there's that process, and then the report identifies the procedure, where there's a, a little bit of a conversation that's happening that certainly involves council as to whether or not it's appropriate. We do ask for a bonusing justification report to, A, identify what the bonus might be, and also to identify what the benefit of that is, that it's clearly something that the municipality wants and requires.
Okay, just to follow up, the reason I'm bringing that up is what the City of Toronto, what they told me they're trying to avoid is developers saying, for example, I'll give an X donation to your local hospital in exchange for this bonusing. So they'd be coming up, some, some creative things, perhaps things they would have been doing anyways, or at least partially. So that's why the City of Toronto said they're, they do give a lot more weight to their named benefits just to avoid those type of situations. So I'm just putting, putting that forward. And the second thing is just a, a comment, and this is probably more for the public than anyone else. Sometimes people think when we speak of bonusing and we list a number of benefits and we talk about 25%, et cetera, it seems like almost a straight trade-off. You do this, you automatically get that. And I want to emphasize for the public that that's definitely not the case. These are guidelines for us, we, we have no obligation to do bonusing for, for anyone. But if we do feel that bonusing is in our favor, we do want to be transparent of the type of things that we're looking for in, in favor of, because sometimes the public does think that it's an automatic trade-off, and I want to stress that it is not.
Thank you. Regional councillor.
Thanks very much. I just wanted to speak briefly to the issues that councillor Kirwin raised in relation to the report, and the, the idea that will we be able to, in fact, intensify without adequate allocation in the future? An allocation for those, again, in the public who aren't aware, is basically the sewage capacity to be able to grow. And it, and you have to have that sewage capacity, which is allocation, to do it. The two things I want to say, I just want to reiterate partially what our CAO was saying, which is that the twinning of the Forest Main, which is going to hopefully happen the next few years, if not sooner, is going to be, well, highly disruptive to the, to the, some, some, some areas of our community, is a crucial project. Its, its, its secondary purpose, or third, tertiary purpose is allocation-related. Its, its primary purpose is the fact that, as the CAO said, it, it, there is no redundancy there. It's typical, if not the norm, to have a second pipe to allow for all kinds of emergency situations. So we're not embarking on this just to find a, a little bit of allocation, we're doing it because it's a health and safety concern. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know that there's another circumstance in the entire York region system that's comparable to, to that situation. So... So that's important. The allocation is, no question, is tight, and it's probably the projections for Newmarket in the future is probably the tightest any community in York region is projected to have, be or have been in the past. The holdup is purely provincial approval. The region has the funding in place. They've got, they're even moving forward on engineering design, even though they don't have the approval, which involves some risk, but they're doing everything they can to move it forward. But the province is very slow with the approval of the EA. The last thing I want to mention in relation to this is important as well, is that we are taking other steps. We've been able to, at the region, secure what was once limited to a single II project, which essentially creates allocation. As in the Glenway example, we were able to get a regional council approval for a second of such project, which will help with, which could potentially help with allocation. And we also have what I, for lack of a better term, will call a contingency report that we will be receiving from the CIO of the region and staff at the region, which will look at every other option and opportunity for addressing the allocation pinch if and when it comes. And so there are some other things we're doing to try to be as ready as possible, and I thought I'd just bring those to attention as well. Thank you.
Ongoing discussions with the region virtually on a monthly basis, Peter, I believe? And CIO and I are meeting with our MP, our MPP, on a quarterly basis, and this has always been on our agenda in terms of discussion. So hopefully, there might be a little more bench strength with our MPP at this point. Are there any further questions? So all those, Counselor Kerwin, sorry, I'm getting used to the technology.
I really thank Regional Counselor and Deputy Mayor Taylor, you know, for those comments, and he's quite aware of my concerns because the massive disruptions for that forest main will be in Ward Two with an open cut on Pearson Street, which will be extremely disruptive. And of course, I've always been involved with the environment. And, you know, I'm waiting for Chris Ballard, who's the new MPP for the environment. You know, I'm waiting for, to have a look at that report. But I stand by, you know, and I know that allocation is crucial, and this municipality would come to a standstill without it. But in my mind, my humble opinion, serving on the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority and gone through this, what they call a water treatment plant rather than a sewage treatment plant, which is to be located in the north part of the region, to me is the crucial part of the link. And I don't know what this forest main twinning will cost, but the estimate that I've looked at is substantial. It's, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's between $200 and $300 million. It's massive. So we're doing this to get a small amount of allocation, which we need, and I don't deny that. However, the real solution is the reclamation plant. And to me, that's what we should be pushing, rather than spending the $300 million here and then what the reclamation plant costs there, and it's a very tricky type of plant because it involves reverse osmosis. So that plant, when we build it, is going to be no small cost. It's anywhere between $700 million and $1 billion. And John has confirmed the minimum of $700 million. So we spend $300 million over here, and then we spend another billion over here. And the only one who can pay for that is the homeowner, is the person who buys that home. So the cost of homes, which is extremely high now, that cost from the developer has to be passed on to the homeowner. So it's no question, as the Deputy Mayor has said, it's a very sticky wicket that we're looking at. But I would prefer the long-term solution to the, an interim solution, and then on top of that, the long-term solution. And plus, the environment is crucial. It's no easy job and no easy task that they're facing. And I respect the fact that the Ministry of the Environment has more or less delayed this, maybe not one year this year, maybe next year, and maybe another year. And that will even put more pressure on Newmarket.
Thank you. Regional Counselor, and I'd like to get back to the density guidelines. I understand allocation is a part of that, and we've had a good, robust discussion about that. Go ahead, John.
Thanks very much. Just a couple of things. I do think it's an important topic, and I think it's, Counselor Kerwin's right to be concerned about allocation and the costs involved in providing allocation. These facilities are very expensive, and there's no question about it. But I do, I do believe that the working number on the, on the treatment plant itself in East Gullimbury is in the high $600 million, so around seven, getting close to $700 million. I've not heard a billion. And I believe the twinning is considerably less than $300 million. Maybe we can get that number emailed to us at what the working estimate is. But what I really want to stress here is, though, is that, and I do differ somewhat than you on this, Counselor Kerwin, I don't believe at all that the forest main twinning and the water, the treatment plant itself are an either-or scenario. I think they are, they're a necessity-go together. And it's not that we're doing an interim solution that's going to be very costly when we could, when we should be just doing the proper solution. They're very different projects that, and the water, the forest main twinning, regardless if the water reclamation plant was already built, would still, I believe, need to be pursued. I think our CIO would say that same thing. I think frankly, the Conservation Authority would say the same thing. It's a matter of health and safety. It's a matter of protecting Lake Simcoe and the watershed by not having that redundancy, which is a norm in systems today and is the norm across the GTA. So I think it's a project that has to be done to make sure that that's a safe environment, that the watershed's protected, that our health and safety is protected, and would occur regardless. But both are important and urgent, and there's no question that, you're correct, Counselor Kerwin, that the sooner they can get to moving on the Upper York, the better because it's only going to go up in price the longer it takes. But also because it's a very important and needed piece of infrastructure that is unseen to most, but nonetheless very much needed. So I just wanted to, and if I could, but just if the CIO could confirm for me, would you, would you agree that even if the Upper York, sorry, the treatment plant itself were already built, we would still be pursuing the twinning of the forest main because of the nature of what it's really intended to do, which is address the watershed and the health and safety?
Mr. Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The twinning of the forest main has been on the books for a number of years, even when the northern area and East Gullimbury was to come down as part of the York Durham system before they switched the method of dealing with growth in the north. It's one that is operational and safety-related, and yes, it does provide some additional capacity, but that certainly is not the reason for it being pushed hard by your engineering staff for many years and more recently by council. It's one where there's a risk right now with a system that is dependent upon one forest main pipe. And I do recognize it's disruptive. It was disruptive when it went in, and so was Pearson Street when in, I believe, as part of the reconstruction as well. So great care will have to be taken to minimize that disruption, but it is actually, like, it is very critical, and it should be the first one to get into place so that Newmarket has a backup system in the event of failure. And we did have a sort of a simulated failure that happened in a different way, and that was during the major eastern seaboard blackout where the pumping stations failed. And there, the backup system, the pumping station in Aurora failed, and sewage came down through the Holland River. And we certainly do not want to see that happen again.
Thank you. Counselor, I have you in the queue, but I'd like to get back to the basis of the report. But just some brief final comments.
I appreciate all of that, okay? But I do remember the 16th line, okay? And I won't, I won't mention it here. And I totally agree with the environmental concerns. You know, that's exactly what we don't want. But we don't want to be putting a forest main through areas where there's quicksand. And while we're doing there, the machinery sinks, and we leave it in the ground, okay? End of story. So I am very much concerned and very much aware of it because I have had the pleasure to sit on the Conservation Authority for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll call the question then. All those in favor of the recommendations as amended to include the policy review in two years? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you. Next item then is item number six, which is the Automated Speed Enforcement, or the AMPS, which is the Administrative Municipal Penalties System. So this was a, an information report that was requested to be placed on the committee agenda. Could I have some, could I have a recommendation with respect to this? Counselor Vig? You move the receipt of the report?
Move to receive the report.
Okay. Is there a second for that? Counselor Broom. Counselor Vig is the mover.
Just a couple of questions. I'm just looking for some additional information. Residents have asked me this. This report really looks at using photo radar for its stop signs and for speeding in residential areas, and there's generally a lot of support to do that. I did have someone ask me, though, if the information from that, if somebody goes through a stop sign, if somebody exceeding the speed limit, does that information also go to the individual's insurance company or somehow to the police to lose points? Or perhaps you can answer that first? Or is it purely administrative, much the same ways we collect fines for other bylaw infractions?
Okay. Esther?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the, to Counselor Vig. We have our deputy clerk here, Kieran, and she has been part of the regional working group. So I'll ask Kieran if she has some more information about that.
Kieran.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. As far as insurance, I'm not aware of any provisions of sharing information between the municipality and insurance companies, so I can't speak to that. However, I can say that we are in the process of still evaluating the program, and coming up with options is expected to be in place by the end of this year. So the regional working group right now is in the process of collecting data from each individual municipality, and then we'll be coming back with options to report back as a group by the end of this year, early 2018.
Okay. Thank you for that. I do have one more question, but just a comment on that. I think we'd get a lot greater buy and a lot more, greater acceptance if it is, just remains administrative. So that's just feedback I'm getting. The second question I have, and once again, you're going to be going through your research process and looking at best practices. We all know there's a difference in a residential area where the speed limit is 40 kilometers an hour. We all know there's a difference between 42 kilometers an hour and 55 kilometers an hour and 80 kilometers an hour. Can you talk a little bit about what you know so far regarding thresholds? And at what point does information go to the police for enforcement, et cetera, et cetera? And at what point do, in an administrative program, do we start handing out fines? Is it at 42? Is that threshold that low or at another point?
Kieran?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would suspect that the threshold would be similar to the red light cameras you would see across the municipality right now. I don't know what they are specifically to be able to speak to, whether it's 42 or whether it's 52. But again, that would be something that we would look at as a group with our transportation network engineers at the region. So again, I suspect that it would be similar to a red light camera program, but just in the designated community safety zones.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to the report, and perhaps as a suggestion, you do be looking at some thresholds. Because as I said, 42 is different than, 52 is different than 80, and they should be treated differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Broom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Vig, for requesting the report. I like this, this direction for four reasons. One, it targets school zones. Two, it targets community zones. Three, it's a collaborative process with other municipalities. And with collaboration, we receive cost sharing, so I like cost sharing as well. I also look forward to hearing the recommendations for consideration. You had mentioned that these are due before the end of 2017. Is that timeframe still doable as far as you know?
Kieran?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We, again, as a regional working group, we are targeting the end of this year to present options to our local individual municipalities, and then we will expect a report by the end of this year, early 2018. So that's the current target.
My final question, and maybe it's an assumption. I'm assuming that members of council will have some inputs on the locations throughout the community safety zones and the school zones.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this will come back as part of the recommended approach and whether it's, I know there were some suggestions floating around the working group, whether it's rotating red light cam, or sorry, speed enforcement cameras versus fixed stationary ones, or whether we would share them amongst the municipality. So again, that's something that we're still working out in terms of location and the placement of the cameras.
Great. I look forward to the information. Thank you very much.
So these cameras are, what we're referencing here are the speeding cameras in community safety zones only, and we have them at all of our schools. I have some concerns, and I'm sure that you'll address those, particularly with the associated costs. I know that we'll need to have a screening officer and a hearing officer, and it's going to be interesting to determine as to whether or not there's sufficient volume to justify those added costs or how we might address that. And there might be a good opportunity for this to be an N6 initiative or other partnerships to go forward. So depending on the volumes, are we going to have some sense of what those volumes are?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's actually what we're going through right now and analyzing our data in terms of volume and seeing whether there is a beneficial approach of being a shared collaboration or whether municipalities would benefit just going, implementing a program individually.
Okay. Thank you. And I see that we've just circulated a letter from the Deputy Attorney General that talks about moving Part III POA prosecutions to municipalities. And perhaps Ms. Armchuck might be better able to respond. Does that cover more than just what we're talking about as far as the speeding cameras in the school zones? Are there other items that would go through this process?
Yes. Thank you.
There we go. Technology. We'll catch up to the technology.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, very good question, and my understanding is the Part III does include more than. And, but without having that legislation right in front of me, I can't name the other things, but I'd be happy to report back to you on that.
Just a consideration, so I'm looking forward to hearing that as well. Okay. Counselor Quapis and then Regional Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very encouraged that this is moving forward as fast as it is. I know there's tremendous amount of complexity associated with this specifically around revenue and revenue flow. I do like the fact that we are looking at easing up the backlog in the courts by going through the AMPs process as opposed to the POA process. I would like to, I am very interested in seeing the report near, at the end of the year. And I would like to encourage everyone to stop using the word photo radar on this. It is actually Automated Speed Enforcement, or for short, ASE. Huge implication of that. Photo radar is associated with a very different type of speed control that was used way back when. It has very negative connotation, and this is something very, very different. So again, I would like to encourage everyone to use ASE or Automated Speed Enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Regional Counselor.
Thanks very much. Just the, there was a request from Counselor Broom to involve the word counselors in the placement of potential ASEs. And the, I guess my request, I think I've repeated this one before, is that, that staff on, I think frankly, on virtually any issue in town, consult with the elected officials involved. And I'm sure that that was intended. But the reason I raise that is because, and I do want to use this as an opportunity to go backwards as well, on page 30 of the last report on community benefits, the report actually the last report on community benefits, the report actually says, the documentation on page thirty actually says that following the public meeting, if appropriate, planning staff and elected officials, including the Ward Counselor, will work with applicant owner on the bonusing details, including. And we previously had a report on another topic a couple of months ago, I believe it was about how to trigger reviews of, of traffic issued stop signs, traffic mitigation, et cetera, and it referenced, you know, consulting with the Ward Counselor, and I just want to urge us as a town to continue to reflect the reality that there's various elected officials, including the mayor, the Regional Counselor, the Ward Counselor, and perhaps all of council on some of these, and particular things like community benefits have a very size of, size of buildings and the community benefits that go along with them have a far-reaching implication for, for possible multiple wards or even the entire town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? The recommendations that the information report be received. All those in favor? Any opposed? None. That's carried. Next item then that remains under the consent agenda is the OMB appeal report, and we do have an in-camera closed session prior to that. What time is it? It's about three o'clock. I wonder if we might take a ten-minute break until three o'clock, and then we'll come back here, we'll go into a closed session, and once we complete the closed session, then we'll come back out and deal with item number nine and the balance of, and the balance of the agenda. So we'll recess until 3:00 PM, which is ten minutes.
I'll reconvene this meeting. And in doing so, I will ask for a motion to go into a closed session to receive legal advice. Councilor Kirwin, Regional Councilor, all those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you.
...
Okay, back to streaming, we're reconvening after our closed session meeting. The only item remaining from the consent items to be dealt with separately is item number nine, which is the appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board with respect to denial of applications regarding 770 Gorham Street. I'll bring that report forward. Counselor Kirwin, would you like to make a motion, please?
I make a motion to get it on the board, on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, but I will be making a recommendation a little bit different than the report.
Okay, well, we can have, we can receive that now, but so your recommendation would be?
My recommendation, Mr. Mayor, is that we should appear at the O M B rather than be that we should not appear. And also, the C I O, I'm not within the mailing zone, I do live at 317 Maple Street, but I'm not within that, the zone of information that's delivered to the residents, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seconded by Regional Counselor. So the motion then, not as on the report, the motion then is that staff appear on behalf of the town to support?
That is correct.
The decision, to support the decision of the Committee of Adjustment.
Just take away the word "not."
Okay. Okay, are there any, any further questions or comments? Counselor Kirwin, did you want to speak to that?
We really discussed it thoroughly in camera, but I'll welcome some information from our Regional Counselor and Deputy Mayor.
Okay, as the second, or Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much, yeah. I think that, first of all, I want to thank staff for their, the report and the information they share with us, this is obviously wasn't that, was not an easy decision to make, and we, staff are constantly watching out for resource and budget implications, and as they should, and we appreciate it. This case, we, I think it's important, but this is a bit of a unique situation, I mean, we're going to be having a change with the O M B soon to a local planning tribunal, and that will change things considerably, number one, but number two, there's, this, this is a minor variance that has an alignment between staff's planning position that they documented for the Committee of Adjustment and the Committee of Adjustment decision, where they both align, and that frankly increases one's likelihood of success at the O M B, and as a council, we always have to consider the likelihood of success, because if your likelihood of success is low, then you don't want to spend taxpayers' money. My understanding is that, in all likelihood, our staff will be attending this themselves, which is still a resourcing issue, but it's not as a direct an impact as outsourcing. I think that this also is, well, it's, it's not part of the O M B purview, we are aware that this House is the interest of our Heritage Committee, and they would like to see it protected, and we've heard from, you know, the community and our own staff and the Committee of Adjustment, and everybody wants to see this, this request for this severance where one, one lot would be quite a bit smaller denied, and so I think it's my feeling, I think fair to say collectively council, or certainly to try to stand, to go to the O M B and see that through. And I think that even though the O M B wouldn't be considered directly, I think the fact that this is on our, our heritage list of houses that should be considered for designation means it's a, it's an important heritage building in our community. So I think all of those factors put together, and the fact that we're talking about an O M B hearing that probably was, is only one day in duration, you know, this isn't comparable to, you know, a clock tower. So I think that, I certainly support Counselor Kirwin's motion that we, we go through with this, we'll see how, it'll be interesting to follow the experience, and then we'll look forward to seeing the local planning tribunals come into place and how the system changes under that. But I do think it's important that we, we take this step and that we, we support the committees, the various committees frankly, and, and the public, and our own positions as staff and Committee of Adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Being none, then, I'll call a question, all those in favor. Any opposed? That is carried, thank you. I believe that deals with all of the consent items, or items listed as consent, reports by regional representatives.
I'll report a counsel.
Any notices of motion?
Actually, I probably won't report a counsel, there's still nothing to report.
Well, that's, that in itself is a report. Notices of motion? Being none, okay, any motions? Counselor Hampton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been in contact with a number of residents in my ward who have had some flooding issues and have some concerns over it. The one resident has forwarded me a information report from Intact Insurance, and it speaks to municipalities who get involved with creating some type of a subsidy to be involved in backflow preventers, creating a subsidy and a cost sharing and removing downspouts going directly into sanitary, and I'm hoping that staff could maybe, I'm not sure if I need to make it as a motion, but if we could see a report, and I'll forward the Intact report to the Commissioner, that we have a report come to us at some point as to our ability to work with the residents who have been impacted by flooding and sewage coming up through their basement.
Okay, can I deal with that as a new business, as opposed to a motion?
Sure.
So we'll provide some information to staff. Mr. Shelton, what would the timelines be? I guess it'd be helpful to have the information in hand first, and the request is to explore...
Cost sharing or subsidies to homeowners to install backflow preventers, to look at creating more allocation by looking at those homes as well, if they're dumping their downspouts from their, from their home into, into the sanitary or into the, yeah, into the sanitary.
So in part, I think that's reference to the infill, or inflow and infiltration projects, and also in terms of exploring what other municipalities are doing in terms of backflow preventions and those kinds of programs, so...
Yeah, I think I understand the issue, Mr. Mayor, just to maybe clarify, you're looking for staff to set out potential methods to assist the residents in dealing with that issue?
Yes.
For example, one that we have done in the past, where there is a connection requirement or something like that, council has given consideration of putting the capital cost of that on the residence bill over a period of time to help mitigate the costs, you know, over five to 10 years. If you're looking for those type of mechanisms, subsidies or assistance in some way, I think we could do that.
I'd like to share the report with staff, and there's a number of municipalities, I'm just looking at it now, Brantford, Durham Region, Halton, Hamilton, Kingston, London, and some of the initiatives they've taken to work with the residents who've been impacted by this, and so they don't continually have these problems, and yeah, if we can look at what that cost could potentially be, and what we can do to, to help the residents. I don't want to speak too much on the issue itself and the homes that have been impacted, because our staff have told the residents that our system has been working efficiently and properly, and it, it's not something that is the fault of our municipality, but yeah, so I'll, I'll share this report, and if we can go from there and receive some further information of what our ability to potentially do to help these homeowners in the future.
So options for high hazard areas? Okay, so we'll circulate the report first, and then when that's received, maybe we'll get an idea as to, as to what the timelines might be to, to provide that information set, okay?
Thank you.
And so we'll put that on the list, Bob, and then we'll, we'll just, yep, go ahead.
Can I just clarify, though?
Yep.
I, I thought we had a different process about them, we don't do timelines now in the meeting, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep, so yeah, the, the process would be is that the request would, would, would show up on the outstanding matters, and staff would let us know what the timelines might be on that, through that process. Does that work for you, Bob?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor, and again, I'm assuming with something like this that that is supported by council as a whole, that it's direction to staff.
Any concerns about that? Do, would you need a motion, then?
I don't think so, just, in some cases, we'd like to see a motion, but just with that advice, that's fine.
Maybe when you get that information, and it's going to be a significant investment of time, then maybe we can bring it back and deal with it that way, okay? All righty, are there any other items of new business? Counselor Vague, Counselor Twitty, Counselor Cornyn, Counselor Quappus, so, okay.
Okay, I'll try, be really, really quick, myself and other counselors, I'm sure, have experienced it, we have more absentee landlords, vacant homes, and especially running into Copper Hills and a few in, in Stonehaven, where person who owns a home may not even be living here, and their, their property standards, or at least on the maintenance of the property, has gone way, way down, meaning that they never cut the grass. We have a process that we go through, person gets a notice, eventually cut it, if they don't cut it, we cut it, maintain it, clean it up, and put it on their tax bill, but I don't think we have a penalty beyond what our cost is, and I know I've got repeat offenders within my area, and they just see it as a service being provided that they pay for. It might be the most expensive lawnmower in the lover half, but it's certainly not something that is working as a, as a disincentive for them to do it. So basically, what I'm asking is if we can have a report, we are at the end of the summer, so it's not a great hurry right now, but if we can have a report, what exactly our policy is, typically what we charge back to, to, you know, homeowners that are not maintaining their property, and perhaps what type of options we have based on what other, perhaps other municipalities are doing, then if we can put a penalty in there, too, I just want to make it, I want to take away the incentive to use a Newmarket grass cutting service.
Okay, I'll have the clerk speak to that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we actually have a report coming forward in November regarding a Clean Yards bylaw, which will actually make it much more efficient and effective to do enforcement on those vacant properties. It won't be the same timeframe as the property standards bylaw, which sets out the notice requirement, we can actually go to the property and have much more quick response and turnaround time, and we are looking at penalties around that, so we're working on it, and we actually have it scheduled in our work plan to come forward in November.
Good enough, thank you very much.
Would that be part of the A M P S process, administrative fees?
So...
Possible.
Possibly, we do have an opportunity to look at the A M P S program with regards to how we collect our fines currently through the court system, and whether we want to take on that collection through the A M P S program for more than just the speed, speed traffic, yeah, through the other program.
Automated traffic management.
Yes, there, there, that whole A M P S program can be expanded to look at other areas, including our traffic, our, our parking revenues also, whether we want to handle that ourselves rather than going through the regional court system, so we are looking at that as a fulsome program, and how it would work for Newmarket, again, whether that would be administered as a joint program, whether it be N six or through the regional group, or individually as Newmarket itself.
Okay, well, the timing seems perfect, because we're not going to have this grass cutting issue really coming up again until spring.
Mm-hmm.
We are at the end of August, right?
That's correct.
Right now, so it seems to work out great to do it over that period. Thank you very much, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Counselor Twitty?
Thank you. It's been almost a couple of years since we did a, did a survey to the residents in the area of Glen Cedar School with regards to the parkland that was there, and we removed a backstop several years ago, and had looked at what to do with that, the area of, of the town in, in my ward, so I'm just, under new business, wanted to request an update from staff on the status of the conversations of the parkland improvements that we have had with the school board, and possibly what new recreational facilities that could be situated at the Glen Cedar School in the, in the park area there.
Mr. McDougall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to Counselor Twitty, this is great, I get to try the microphone today after all, so, so thank you, Counselor Twitty, we would be pleased to come back with a report to all members of council, which outlines the, a little bit of the chronology where we're at today, and, and how we potentially can advance conversations going forward. The one challenge with this particular area is, well, Glen Cedars is a beautiful green space located right in the heart of a large neighborhood, so presents tremendous opportunity. It is technically owned by the school board, so, so it does involve conversations and potential negotiations with the school board in terms of use, but, but we'd be very pleased to outline where we're at and where we could potentially go in the form of a report, either information or committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items? Okay, okay, Counselor Kirwin? Oh, yeah, yeah, we've, oh, once, once you indicate your request to speak, I think, then we can put you...
Two items, just a thank you, wandering around the town on the weekend, from the Ray Twitty complex to the Riverwalk Commons to Ferry Lakes and the music festival, I was up the Newmarket Car Club, and staff had provided an extra generator, just a success story, place was packed, Car Club wants to thank staff, walking around the Riverwalk Commons and to see the music festival come into being, and the dedication of the staff that started on Thursday and spread over the weekend till Monday to clearing it up, just a profuse thank you from the residents of the town of Newmarket, it was just a phenomenal weekend, and you had a difficult time to partake of everything, from the farmer's market to the music festival, to the car club, to the walkways that we have, so just a, a, a great job well done. A reminder that tonight is the movie night, Moonlight Movies in College Manor Park, starting around eight o'clock, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank FM Foods, they will be providing all the residents who attend that with chocolate, and remember, they're peanut free, they're made in Newmarket, we have Milky Way, Musketeers, and the New Malteser, and M and M's, the chocolate candy, but no peanuts, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank, as I say, FM Foods, they just expanded in Newmarket, they're welcome in Newmarket, and everyone who attends the movie tonight will get a chocolate, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Quappus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Kirwin, for recognizing the hard work that town has put in for, over the summer, various functions, including the latest one, which is the Ferry Lake and Music Festival, phenomenal turnout, phenomenal job by, by the staff. It's been a long summer, so I only have three items, and I'll make them very, very short, three new business items. The first one is, over the summer, over the last couple of weeks, I have received a petition from the residents of Botsford, asking for a couple of things, because they do have two, two preschool locations and daycare, even though this is a one-way street, they do have a concern about speed mitigation or lack of speed mitigation devices, as well as many parents, or I shouldn't say parents, many drivers are actually taking a left turn on a one-way street against traffic in order to bypass and get onto a main street, so they have brought in a petition together with a very detailed letter of some of the suggestions. I would like to, I would like to ask council to accept this petition, so I can give it to Madam Clerk, and at the same time, I would also ask for an immediate check on a, implementing a no-left-turn sign right by the one-way sign that they have, as long as it's in, in line with the M T O guidelines, and at the same time, if direct staff to take a look at long-term speed mitigation for that street as the petition does ask.
So it's to receive and refer to staff with consideration of that request?
Correct.
Okay, then I'll pass that on to... Sure, we'll give it to the clerk right now, thank you.
The second item...
Can we get that circulated to us as well? I don't think, I don't think council's seen it, so.
Okay.
Where you're introducing, council, we haven't seen it, so can we just share it with us as well?
Sure.
We can circulate that, we can ask the clerk to circulate it at the same time?
Yep.
For council's information, good, thank you.
The second item, Mrs. Mayor, is I have received some concerns about the etiquette on our trails, specifically about Tom Taylor Trails, where we do have rules that are written on some of the posts, the rules are very detailed, and a lot of people unfortunately do not read it, what, one of the associations has come up is just a recommendation of a quick addition of additional sign with some of the etiquette rules, that it simply states green light means keep to the right, amber means pass left, and red light means stop off the trail. I'd like staff to take that into consideration. I believe that Counselor Twitty has brought that to staff's attention in the past, I just want to make sure that that is moving forward, and I'll pass that over for circulation as well.
Okay, great, thank you, we'll receive that and then circulate and refer to, have staff consider it as part of it.
And the third item is regarding items number twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, I would like to ask staff to consider doing similar things that item number twenty-five has had in point number four, that the Riverwalk Commons be lit in a certain number, or a certain color, that the actual proclamation is being requested on, so for example, in item twenty-six, prostate cancer awareness month, I would like to ask staff to consider adding point four, that Riverwalk Commons be lit in blue and dark blue, which are the colors of prostate cancer. Number twenty-seven, similar, number four, in gold, or in this case, I guess it would be amber or yellow, whatever is available for Riverwalk Commons. Item number twenty-eight, consider for the recovery day, silver, I'm not too sure what color that would be, maybe grayish, or I'll leave that up to staff, and item number twenty-nine, for P K D to light it up in teal, their secondary color would be purple.
So, I think my suggestion is rather than, rather than specific colors and specific dates, that maybe we explore the possibility of displaying the appropriate lights on the Riverwalk whenever we receive a proclamation, and that would, that would capture any future requests, for example, if there was, you know, red for, for, really for life, or whatever the appropriate colors are. Mr. Shelton, your thoughts on that, and how we might approach that?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I was thinking along the same lines of just delegating that authority to staff to, if possible, program the lights to that color, make conflict with something else that council's already given us direction on, but just delegate that to us, and whatever can be done with the lighting, we would do, and I'm not sure about the feasibility currently, whether we're, we're at that point or not, but if you left that with us, where we can do it, we would certainly do it.
That'd be great.
That'd be appreciated, thank you.
Okay, any other items under new business? Okay, so, I think with the exception, we've dealt with the closed session, there are no public hearing matters this evening, the addendum has been dealt with, and so a motion to adjourn would be appropriate, so if you want to spring forward with that.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Kirwin, seconded by Counselor Broome, all those in favor, any opposed? None, that is carried, this meeting is adjourned.